All right, good evening. Now I'd like to bring the regular evening meeting of the Township of Lining Council to order. And the first item is the adoption and receipt of the agenda items. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Arneson and Seconder Counsel Qualley. All those in favor, opposed and carried. The next item is the adoption of the minutes of the regular evening council meeting of June 25th and the public hearing meeting of June 25th. Counsel Fox moves it, seconded by Counsel Whitmarsh. Any errors or omissions?
Yes.
Counsel Long.
Thanks, Your Worship. Just in item B1, there was just a missing part of that motion that called on writing to the Premier, and I think it just got missed by the clerk where it just said it would be further resolved that copies would be sent to the local governments and the province as well as MLAs. So I think that's been corrected, but I wanted to make sure that's done officially for the record.
In the record, yeah. And the letter reflects that.
That's right. Thank you.
Okay. Nothing else, I'll call a question. All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. And there are no presentations. There's one delegation, Mr. Don Basani. Is Mr. Don Basani here? And he'll have five minutes to present, and I'll push the start once he's identified himself.
Counselors, my name is Don Basani. I live at 7883 199th Street in the Jericho Sub-Neighborhood Plan. Once again, I am here to ask for your help. I'm not sure if some of you remember the group asking to join the Jericho Sub-Neighborhood Plan. I am requesting if you could please review and change the land density and FSR from medium density to high density. Also, the FSR changed to 2.25, which was recommended by council back in 2009. March 23rd, 2009, Lucy Barretta, our group speaker and five neighbors, went before council to be included in the Jericho Sub-Neighborhood Plan and asked for high density due to the creek and setbacks. July 15th, 2009, report from staff recommended to council that all seven properties be included in the Jericho Sub-Neighborhood Plan and be given high-density designation due to the severe creek and setbacks. The page that says Jericho Sub-Neighborhood Plan Update, Page 4, shows the final confirmation of the density. It's highlighted in a dark box area and also Area A. Our group then paid $72,000 to get into the Jericho Sub-Neighborhood Plan, and we were in. This year, we listed our property, and after many potential buyers went to the township to get information, they were told the property is set at medium density and the FSR at .75, and that was it. My realtor talked to the planning department and found out that the FSR restricts the amount of units that can be built on my property. We set up a meeting with Mr. Colin Moore from the planning department on February 13th, 2018. Katie and Tony, adjacent neighbors to my north, myself, my realtor, went to this meeting. We didn't get much out of the meeting, but when I asked Mr. Colin Moore about the density and FSR, his reply was, "We were given medium density because it gives a buffer between high-density and single-family housing." As for the FSR, they had calculated a certain number of residents for this area. Near the end of the meeting, Mr. Colin Moore did divulge that homeowners would not be given a high-density or FSR on our properties, but developers can apply if they could give them something like handicap or low-cost housing. I contend that 400 feet of creek and green space is more than enough buffer space between the two areas, Latimer to the west and Jericho east of the creek. The creek makes a natural boundary line. There will be no towering of buildings over the housing. All of the properties that are in the Jericho Sub-Neighborhood Plan were given a higher density and FSR than any of the properties on the west side of 199th Street, the ones that asked to join the Jericho Sub-Neighborhood Plan. The zoning we were giving was medium density, which means you can build six stories high, but the FSR of .75 means the building can only be two stories high, less with above-ground parking, to stay within the FSR. The way it is now, no buyer will even look at our place with the zoning. Twenty-story buildings are already in the approval process, just two properties away from my property. I am afraid when all this development is in full swing, my property will not be enjoyable. I feel I'm not asking for anything more than what was recommended to be given back in 2009. Please, I am asking for your help in this matter once again. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a question or comment from Counsel Fox. Counsel Fox.
Thank you. Thanks for coming, Mr. Basani. $72,000, was that $72,000 per property or $72,000 as a cost?
All the properties that joined, the six of us.
Okay. So your request, you've got a little map here, I don't know if there's any around, but are you requesting the increase for the section, let's just take your property, 7883, from the creek to 199th Street, or are you asking for the whole property?
For from the creek to 199th Street.
So that's where you want the...
Yes, my developable piece of land.
Developable piece of land in that section.
Yes.
So I think, if I'm not mistaken, you put this on my desk?
Yes.
Okay. So the area we're talking about is the area in yellow, and if you look at your piece of property, 7883, I think the piece to the, east of the creek is shaded. Is that the intent there, or the, it's shaded a little darker?
East of the creek?
Yeah.
The piece with 7883 on it is the developable portion of my property.
Yeah, the east of that black line.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. That's all.
Thank you. No further questions. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. All right. We move on to, there are no reports to council. We move to bylaws for first and second reading. F1 is rezoning application number 100510, 26489 Fraser Highway, bylaw number 5400. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Whitmarsh, seconded by Counsel Fox. Discussion on F1. Seeing none, I'll call it. Oh, sorry. There's Counsel Arneson, F1.
Yes, thank you, Worship. Yeah, I was interested in this proposal because I know that we really need some daycare. However, I'm looking at the site, and I went by there today. I do have some challenges with respect to the sighting and it being close to 264 and the Fraser Highway with the access there. So I'm hoping that if this is supported to go forward to a public hearing, that there could be a traffic study to indicate what would happen once we have, you know, upwards of 50 or more vehicles coming and going through that site during the daytime when children are being dropped off. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Counsel Long.
Well, thanks, Your Worship. I'm a little challenged by the diagram that's provided here and some of the numbers. So the, no, not this one, the one that shows, yeah, this here. So I imagine it's trying to suggest some of the amenities that could be included. I don't know if those are the locations of them, but it's asking for 50 kids, and this Fraser Health certificate said it might be okay for 43. So that's my first concern, is are we approving 50 prematurely? And even at 43 kids, I really don't have a great sense of how many square feet the building is and whether that's, you know, I guess if Fraser Health has given a certificate of that many kids, it's doable, but is that really something that we can support, you know, sort of cramming the kids in a small building? So I mean, I think that there's a little bit of lack of description and details in the drawing that makes me a bit nervous. The location isn't ideal either, but there is definitely a need for daycare in all our communities, so that part is supportable, but is this the right location? And is there enough room for 43 or 50 kids? And I don't really have the answer for that. But I mean, if we do go to public hearing, I think we better come up with some of the, somebody better come up with some good explanations of how, you know, how safe or how appropriate it would be to have that many kids in that size of a building.
Thank you.
Does Staff have a comment about that perhaps? Maybe they could help.
Mr. Staffy, do you have any comments on some of the issues raised by Counsel Fox? Or Counsel Long?
Your Worship, what I can say is that subject to council's consideration of the land use issue, the applicant will have to obtain a license from the Fraser Health Authority with respect to the Community Care and Assisted Living Act. And as part of that process, they'll have to ensure that there is adequate space for the children. Counsel Long is correct in that the current tentative approval granted by Fraser Health relates to 43 children, but the applicant has indicated that they wish to apply for 50 to avoid a future, potential amendment to consider future possibilities.
Okay. Thank you. All right, I'll call a question on F1. And it carries with Counsel Arneson opposed. And move on to F2, and this is rezoning application 100491, Platinum Group, bylaw 5402, 5403. Counsel Whitmarsh moves, Seconder Counsel Fox. Discussion, Counsel Arneson?
Yes, thank you, Worship. At this juncture, I know it's somewhat unusual, but I would actually like to refer this back to staff at this time, prior to it going to a public hearing. The purpose of taking it to, back to staff is so that staff can work with the proponent in order to try and save more trees, because I noted from the staff report, there's approximately 1,000, slightly less than that, significant trees on the site, and most of them will be lost.
So moved and seconded, moved by Counsel Arneson, seconded by Counsel Richter. I'll open up the referral. Any discussion on Counsel Richter?
Yeah, I had a concern as well with the number of trees that are coming out of here. And basically, it says in our report here that 985 significant trees exist, we don't know what they are, but that's a lot of trees, with 99 trees having retention potential. Now, what exactly does retention potential mean? Will those 99 trees be saved, or gee, too bad, they're not going to make it either? And also, I had a second question with regards to, I thought these applications that were coming through under the 87 also had to be able to fit in under the 2017 plan, and I'm just wondering if 371 trees fits, which is what will be after the development's done, fits with both plans.
Thank you. Mr. Staffy.
Your Worship, in terms of the potential for retention, it is always subject to, I guess, a further review and confirmation of the health and safety implications by an arborist, so that's why it's indicated as a potential. And with respect to, I guess, the number of trees and also the timing of the application, staff can confirm the application was submitted prior to the, I believe it was 2017, October 2017 deadline, which then allows the application to be considered based on the 1987 plan.
Okay, and the 1987 plan doesn't have a specified amount of replacement trees?
It does not, no.
It does not, okay. The other question that I had is with regards to this phase development agreement. What is the phase development agreement intended to do?
Your Worship, that's the legal terminology that we have used in the past with respect to similar applications. It is really a tool that we're using to ensure the contributions towards community amenities are being implemented.
Okay. And I see the report from the Langley School District says they're only anticipating 50 children coming out of these 66 houses. I suspect that might be a little low, but, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Arneson?
Well, thank you. Yes, I'm willing to speak to that. I think it's really important to consider that although the majority of council voted to allow these applications to go forward, talking to staff recently, we're right on the very cusp of getting ecological studies that were really part of the principle in redeveloping this area, so we could understand how the ecological area, if you look at this map, we're not very far away from the Little Campbell River. This is a significant ecological area with that number of trees, and I think we owe it to ourselves that if we are moving forward, and in good faith, that we want to have an opportunity to look at some of the options that we crafted together as a council, to consider how can we save more trees in this very iconic area. So I hope that council will consider taking the extra step to send it back to staff and to try and come up with a rationale. I notice also this report does not contain any arborist report, so I wouldn't know if some of these trees are 100 years old, if they're fir trees, you know, they could be as old as Methuselah, and I would have no clue. So I'm hoping that we can get some more details and try and do some reconfiguration that I think would be more appropriate.
Thank you. Counsel Long.
So we're on the referral, I guess, Your Worship. And the question I had was, yes, it mentioned several times in the report that it does comply with the 1987 plan, but can staff highlight what inconsistencies there are with the 2017 plan that might be pertinent? Is it simply the tree retention or the tree replacement? Or are there other considerations?
Sure.
And would the proponent, would this referral allow the proponent and staff to try and move a little bit more towards complying with both?
Mr. Staffy.
Your Worship, in terms of the land use, there haven't been any changes from the 87 to the 2017 plan, so it's still designated for a single-family residential. Mr. Richardson is checking to see what the 2017 plan actually calls for in terms of the size of the lots, but I can confirm that it is single-family, whether it's 7,000 or 10,000 square foot lots, there may be a difference there. But the difference is really, with respect to the 87 plan as to the 2017 plan, is really to do with other requirements, procedural requirements, such as completion of enabled planning process, waiting for that process to complete before the application can be granted final reading.
So I wonder how successful this referral would be in moving council towards a more comfortable resolution to this or acceptance of this, and I guess that's what we're voting on, so. But the tree replacement is not different? I mean, if that was modified, would that tell?
That's correct, it was, yes.
Okay, thanks, Your Worship.
Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I think that, you know, this is an important piece of property in the Brookswood area, but I mean, I do see that with tree replacement and saving some of the trees that are there, we're looking at about 40% of the trees, of the number of trees being there once the development is completed. That seems, you know, quite good to me to have that many lots developed and having 40% of the tree cover. You know, I think this is, it fits with the 87 plan, it pretty much fits with the 2017 plan, but we're not asked to compare it to the 2017 plan. We're asked to see if it fits with the 1987 plan. It fits, it fits well with that, and I think, based on the information meeting that they held, this majority of the people that attended that were in support, and so it makes sense to me to send this to public hearing, and so for that reason, I won't be supporting the referral.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I just want to echo those words. I believe they should go to public hearing. I'd rather hear from the public first before we make some changes, so I won't support the referral, but would support going forward. So with that, I'll call the question on F2. And the referral fails with Counsel Fox, Counsel Whitmarsh, mayor froze, Counsel Qualley, Counsel Sparrow opposed. So we're back to the main motion. Counsel Richter on the main motion, you're on the speaker's list.
It's unfortunate it didn't have another chance to get recrafted to fit in better. I'll agree to send this out to the public to hear their concerns, but I personally am extremely concerned about the loss of trees on this property. A thousand trees is a lot of trees, and I'm also concerned about the configuration of the lots. I don't think the configuration of the lots that are proposed have been put together to maximize any kind of tree retention, but have been and done instead to maximize the number of lots. And the layout doesn't really look that great to me. I think it could have been a little more creative, but I'll defer my opinion until after I hear from the public on it.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, just a question through, Your Worship, to staff. On the drawings on this, and where it intersects, where the property comes to 200th Street and 27th Avenue, I'm not quite grasping when I look at the drawing, and there's a different one that's in the package, but how the road ends up having to be moved around, rather than having 27th Avenue just go straight into 200th. And I'm just wondering if, what the explanation is for that. Is it clear what I'm asking?
Yes, thank you. Your Worship, there are a couple of factors. One is the existing buildings that are, that are being, I guess, the design is intended to avoid having to relocate the buildings, and the other one is matching the existing right-of-way or fitting the road within the existing right-of-way. So existing right-of-way with respect to the location of the road as well as the location of the building, existing buildings.
So the building that you're referring to, is that part of this property, or is it the corner that's not part of it?
That's correct, the corner that's not part of it.
That's someone else's property, and there's a building there, is that what you're saying?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call the question on F2. And it carries with Counsel Arneson and Counsel Davis opposed. And we move on to bylaws first, second, and third reading. G1 is high reclosure, dedication, removal, and disposal, bylaw number 5389. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Fox, seconded by Counsel Sparrow. Discussion, seeing none, I'll call a question on G1. And it carries with Counsel Arneson opposed. Move to G2, and this is high reclosure, dedication, removal, and disposal, bylaw number 5405. Motion, please. Counsel Fox, seconded, Counsel Sparrow. Discussion, seeing none, call a question on G2. It carries with Counsel Richter and Counsel Arneson opposed. And move on to G3, this is Drainage Development Works Agreement, bylaw vest of properties, bylaw 5401. Motion, please. Counsel Arneson, seconded by Counsel Whitmarsh. Discussion on G3, seeing none, call a question. And it carries, Counsel Richter opposed. Move to G4, this is 88 Avenue and 217A Streets, Sewer Local Area Service, bylaw 5397. Counsel Davis, seconded by Counsel Sparrow. Discussion on G4, Counsel Richter.
I just have a question. Is this being done in order to put four homes where there are currently two homes? Is this like one of those RU zonings?
Mr. Staffy.
Your Worship, it's being pursued at this point as a local area service project without any discussion with the applicants, the proponents, in terms of future desires or wishes that they might have.
Okay, but is this in the area that part of the area got water and sewer, and they were able to strata up there to get two homes in every lot, but the other part of it couldn't strata?
As I recall, it is the rural RU1-zoned area, but the area that Counsel Richter, I think, refers to is the one that was to the south of this particular location, Your Worship.
Okay, so by them extending that pipe along, they're going to put four homes in there, is that...
Again, Your Worship, that may be something that they wish to pursue at a future date. This is, this is at this point being presented as a local area service initiative.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, I'll call a question on G4. And it carries unanimously. Move on to bylaws for consideration and third reading. H1 is rezoning and community plan amendment, application number 100140, and development permit, application 100846. This is Quadra Carvel, bylaw 5374, 5375. Motion, please. Counsel Sparrow, seconded by Counsel Fox. Discussion on H1. Seeing none, oh, Counsel Fox.
Thank you, Your Worship. I made reference to this this afternoon in the context of another item we were discussing, and I have to say, this particular project, I'm hoping it moves through effectively. This is right across the street from the Carvel Transit Exchange. I think this is the perfect place for a building of this type and configuration. We talked about it, I guess, this afternoon in the context of garages and so on and so forth. This has obviously lots of parking, but I think it's a perfect location for this kind of a building structure, and I certainly will support it.
Thank you. Counsel Richter?
Yeah, I'm going to support this as well. I think Quadra builds exceptional multifamily homes, and one of the things that really impresses me about the work that they do is they're already thinking years ahead, and I understand all the parking spots that they provide are already wired for electric vehicles, so that's what I call progressive thinking.
Okay, excuse me. Seeing no further discussion, so I'll call a question. If I can get my throat cleared. There we go. Counsel Davis?
Uh-oh.
There we go. And it carries unanimously. Move on to H2, rezoning application number 100508.
Declaring conflict.
Let us put your mic on. Okay?
Yes, declaring a conflict.
All right, H2, rezoning application number 100508, Trinity Western University, bylaw number 5369. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Fox, seconded by Counsel Qualley. Any discussion on H2? Counsel Davis?
Yes, at what stage, this is, this is a permit, at what stage would we talk about, or council talk about soundproofing or sound, right beside the number one highway, along there? It's, it's not in, it's not in the report. What, because it's sitting right beside Highway 1, it's downhill for three miles there, or two, or a mile up, and I'm just wondering, what, is there any provisions in this, in the report for sound?
Mr. Becken?
Your Worship, there's nothing specifically in this report about sound attenuation. It is a building owned by the university itself that'll have mixed office space with some possible residential uses. It's going to be built to commercial standards in accordance with the building code, so there's nothing specifically dealing with the sound in the area. Council could do so, but what separates this apart? This is not a building for resale or redevelopment purposes, it's simply going to be used for university purposes like other buildings on the campus.
Trinity may not be building it themselves. Once we, we're just changing the zoning.
Trinity, Trinity will hire a contractor to build it, but they are building the building.
Okay, so there's no provisions? So when you, last meeting, when we brought it to public hearing, there's residential on top?
Part of the building will be residential, part will be classroom space, it'll be integrated, and it'll be built to commercial standards.
Okay, so we don't, so we don't, we don't know where the residential will go? We don't know that, so that's a...
Correct. They could be in the front, it could be on the southern side or other areas. I mean, it depends on their final plans.
Yeah, because they can't put on Highway 1 downhill, no Jake Braken and all that sort of stuff, so it's going to be anyhow, okay, well, it's not, they know what they're... I just wondered if there's any sound debate. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further discussion, so I'm going to call the question on H2. And it carries unanimously. We ask Counsel Whitmarsh back in.
Leave him there. All right. Do you want to take a vote? Can't vote him off the aisle.
He was sitting there with an ear.
I was just playing cards.
All right, we'll move on to H3, Maryville Community Plan Amendment and rezoning application number 100148, and heritage alteration permit, application number 100893. This is Landstone Homes, bylaw 5351, bylaw 5352, and bylaw 5353. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Long, seconded by Counsel Qualley. Discussion on H3. Counsel Arneson?
Yes, thank you, Worship. I just wanted to comment...
Yes, thank you, your worship. I just wanted to comment on this. I have to say that I think that it is a great project in terms of the heritage aspects and the repurposing of the school on that site. The buildings are attractive. It's going to provide an opportunity for people to move into the area where the old school used to exist but will now be repurposed. I won't be supporting this, however, for two reasons. The first one is I'm very familiar with the site, and I just think that relative to some of the comments that have been made, there's an awful lot of density that's moving not only onto this site but other sites in the area. And I do have concern about the infrastructure and the degree to which we are densifying in a way that our infrastructure is not going to be able to support without some issues. And the other one is, and I do appreciate the proponent, the consultant, and meeting with them to talk about the parking issue, but I'm still bothered by the fact that it has as a condition not come forward at the same time, and it needs to be considered from my perspective as part of the whole package. So those are just my comments.
Thank you. Counsel Long?
Well, thanks, your worship. There were some concerns about traffic, and I'd have to concur, even with this development aside. 48th is becoming quite a busy street, and of course, it has the incline there. So I'm supporting it. I think it's a good project, a great project. But I just wanted to make sure that we were aware that that's an issue regardless of this development or not. And I know I've seen some areas of the township roads improved by ICBC by putting a different surface down on there. But I mean, we should be looking regardless at how we can make that stretch of road a bit safer. Not suggesting speed bumps, so don't get me going there, Mr. Fox. But we should do something to address that concern. So I hope that staff will help us out in that respect.
Okay, I think you noted that. Thank you. Counsel Fox?
Yeah, thank you. I understand with the schoolhouse that there's six buildings there, and each one comes with their own personal strap.
Oh, that's back in the day when you were a principal.
I understand that developers are getting special ones made so that they can go on the mantle of each one of those.
That'd be a good way to stop that. All right, I'm going to call the question before this gets way out of hand. H3. And it carries with Counsel Arnison opposed. Okay. So now we move on to bylaws for final adoption. This is Development Cost Charge Waiver for Affordable Housing, bylaw number 5380. Could I have any discussion? Moved by Counsel Whitmarsh. Yeah, Whitmarsh. I'm ahead of myself. Counsel Qualley seconds it. Discussion. Counsel Arnison.
I have to sing the praises of this bylaw. I'm so supportive of this, and I'm very grateful it's been brought forward. I'm actually taking this a bit proactively out to the community and looking for different service providers who will be encouraged by the incentivization of this to build some more below-market rentals that we really need in this community. So I'm just very happy it's coming forward and thanking all the support and staff in putting it together and for just putting this, spearheading this. I think it's a great initiative.
Thank you. Counsel Fox?
I'm just going to second that. I think that this is a great step forward and something especially for nonprofits. We discussed this actually at Metro Vancouver and discussed the opportunities for nonprofits to get on board, churches and other such organizations who may have land. And this hopefully is an incentive for them to become more proactive. So I'm fully in favor of it.
Thank you. Counsel Qualley?
Thanks. Yeah, I'd like to sort of echo what Counselors Arnison and Fox said. I think it's an important step forward for us to recognize our ability to participate in this process. And I hope some groups will be able to come forward and perhaps leverage some of the money that's become available in recent weeks from the federal government and perhaps the provincial government and sort of double down on some of these incentives and actually make it even more worthwhile. So I'd like to thank the mayor for bringing this forward and thank staff for their effort on this. I think it's an important addition to our toolbox, so I'm happy to support the motion.
Thank you. Counsel Long?
Worship, I support the intent of this without any doubt, but I just have a worry about the wording. And I just want to make this statement so that people can understand where I'm coming from. Just because these, you know, necessary housing is being built doesn't mean that development cost charges don't need to be applied. I mean, there's still plenty of infrastructure that has to be put in no matter where the home is being built and who's occupying it. So many municipalities look at this more like a grant. And I think that's the way I'm looking at it, even though it says it's a waiver of the development cost charges. I guess the other way to look at it is that you're getting that money back in a grant. It's the same thing, but I think we should start thinking more about that wording of that you're getting an incentive, you're getting a grant, because the development charges are still going to apply. You're still going to have to have sewer. You're still going to have to have roads and all that for the development. So I just wanted to make that statement that it's a great incentive, and I think that's the way I would look at it rather than saying it's a waiver of the cost charges. But I guess it equates to the same thing in the end.
Yep, thank you, Counsel Long. And I see no further discussion. I just want to say thanks to staff for bringing this forward in such a timely manner. And it is, I guess, you're correct, it's like a grant. This council helped out the new hospice by giving a grant to allow them to proceed and cover their development cost charges. But this is what's allowed under the, is it Local Government Act or the community charter? It's allowable way for councils to waive development cost charges and assist nonprofits. And certainly they have to meet criteria. It's not just carte blanche. They really have to meet a strict criteria, and it's in line with Metro Vancouver's bylaw, which I think it doubles up. It kind of doubles down on assisting groups. And it's timely in that Noel Shepherd of the Valley is going to a public information meeting, and they'll be coming forward with their proposal. It's been a long time coming. So I do thank staff for putting this forward. Counsel Qualley?
So I just wanted to add one more thing. You know, when we just approved, or gave third reading to the development at Carvath at Quadra's doing, and part of their community amenity was to contribute $400,000 back to a project here in the township. And I think that maybe the general public don't understand or don't know that that was part of their development proposal was to write that check and contribute $400,000 back to this. So when you have developers or anybody making that kind of contribution over and above and then taking advantage of something like this, it really is significant, has a significant impact. So, you know, we have a lot of people in this community that are trying hard to find ways to house everybody of different means. And, you know, I'd like to sort of recognize that contribution too. And in conjunction with this, I think it is super meaningful. So, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I'll now call a question for I1. And it carries unanimously. Thank you. I2 is the rezoning application number 100418, Evans, bylaw 5133. Counsel Davis moves it, seconded. Counsel Fox. Counsel Richter.
Yeah, I just had a question with regards to the length of time between third and final. It's been over three years. Do we have sort of an upper deadline on when final has to go through?
Mr. Seffey?
We don't, your worship. The policy just dictates that staff report a timing to council and advise council of the timing from the public hearing to the time of consideration of final reading. And that's what staff has done in the clerk's note. The complications have included engineering and servicing that had been sort of the reasons for the delay.
Okay, so is there any significant difference between what's getting final today and what we gave third reading to back in April of 2015?
No, your worship, it's the same project.
Thank you. See no further discussion. I'll call the question on I2. And it carries unanimously. And we move on to the Mayor's Council Report. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see a crowd for my great report. Since our last meeting, there have been several community events. I was pleased to attend on council's behalf. On Wednesday, June 27, was a Langley Education Center's graduation ceremony at the Chief Seapass Theater in Fort Langley, and again, congratulations to all these students who in Langley Education Center, these are students who've come back to school to get their dogwood. So for whatever reason, they left school and they made the choice to come back and work very hard. And some of them with, you know, families and jobs and worked hard to get the dogwood. So congratulations to all the students. On Thursday, June 28, I attended the Canada Day celebration at the Langley Lodge. Special entertainment was supplied by the Lady Larks, a quartet who performs music from the World War II era and a tribute to the Andrews Sisters. Again, a great time, a little cooler this year, but still got my ice cream, which is okay. On Thursday, June 28, was also the last meeting of the Community Input Group Task Force. I want to thank all of the community members who took part and contributed their time and ideas on how we can all work together to enhance Langley. The report that has been developed from this task force will guide future councils and assist with strategic planning. So thank you very much to members of council and members of the public who attended these meetings and helped plan for our future. On Friday, June 29, was the ceremony for the new Otter Co-op Outdoor Experience at the Aldergrove Credit Union Community Center. It was wonderful days. We began to introduce this amazing facility to the public. A big thank you goes to residents and staff for all the work and effort they contributed towards ensuring the center was created as such a unique experience in Langley. This is a project that we're all very proud of and will be a great step towards enhancing the Aldergrove community and revitalizing the downtown core. So there's a little bit of a video there. I think staff have to do something to get it going. Put the mouse over top, the top picture. There we go. Yeah. Just the ribbon cutting. And that scissors malfunctioned a little bit. There, had to get serious. There we go. So great to see this facility open. And I know there's, I don't know if there's still opportunity for people to register for the free swim before July 16, but July 16, it opens fully to the public for the outdoor experience, Otter Co-op Outdoor Experience. And thanks to members of council who joined me getting dunked in the bottom right picture. Counsel Davis, Counsel Long, Counsel Sparrow, and myself, along with some enthusiastic residents. Got dumped by that big popcorn bucket of water. On Sunday, July 1, there were several community events celebrating Canada Day, the Langley Centennial Museum, and the B.C. Farm Museum, the Christian Life Assembly BBQ, and the Willoughby Community Park celebrations, to name a few. The weather turned out great, and we celebrated our nation's birthday in style. And I know Counsel Arnison attended the citizenship ceremony on my behalf. Thank you for doing that in Fort Langley. On Monday, July 2, was the Hugh Station Dedication Ceremony at the Greater Vancouver Zoo. The dedication is in recognition of Hugh Lavery, a longtime member of the zoo, who had a passion for trains and people. Hugh passed away earlier this year, and the newly upgraded station has been named in his honor. So I had a great celebration there and took a ride on the train. It's been refurbished. They spent a lot of money in that area, and it's really good to see that the zoo is getting that facelift. And myself and Hagerty, the owl, I took a selfie, the two of us. It was pretty intent. I got it right. On Thursday, July 5, the township hosted its Stakeholders Engagement Session as we looked to creating a new economic development strategy. This was a hugely successful event and well-attended. It featured a keynote speaker, the Honorable Bruce Ralston, Minister Responsible for Jobs, Trade, and Technology, along with Val Litwin, President and CEO of the B.C. Chamber of Commerce, Marshall Walden, CEO of the Destination B.C., Dr. Michael Schwann, Medical Health Officer from the Fraser Health Authority, and Jeff Cross, Vice President of Planning and Policy for TransLink. It was a great day and well-attended, and thank everyone who came out and participated and provided input. On Saturday, July 7, was the annual butterfly release at Kraus Berry Farm. This annual event is hosted by Langley Hospice and the Langley Lodge. And so there, I was taking a selfie of a butterfly this time. Can't see its face, but it was looking intently at the camera, too. On Saturday, July 7, was the closing ceremony of Indigenous Circle of Health at the Chief Seapass Theater. The Township of Langley provided grant monies that will help provide greater opportunities to access social, healthy, and physical activities for the Aboriginal community. And it's also open to the entire community and I know well-attended during the summer, or during the last winter. Staff from Lower Fraser Valley Aboriginal Society and the Langley Centennial Museum have a meeting with many local Indigenous advocacy groups and stakeholders to gather ideas on collaboration, program development, events, and cultural sensitivity training as part of the initiative. The Mayor's Council and the TransLink Board has approved a $7.3 billion Phase 2 investment plan. The approval of this plan is a historic moment for our region as it is the largest transit and transportation investment in Metro Vancouver's history. Benefits for the township means that we'll have extended hours of service and a reduction in wait times on the 341, 342, 364 bus routes. Planning and early works for the Surrey to Langley Line, light rail transit from Surrey to Langley on Fraser Highway with eight new stations, and major road improvements, and a 22% increase in handy dart service are all part of the Phase 2 plan. Upcoming events, we have the Aldergrove Festival Days, July 20 to 22, the British Columbia's longest-running fair. Is that correct, Counsel Long? And how many years now? 106 years this fair's been running. It's the longest-running fair in British Columbia. So just a little bit in my past, I mentioned TransLink Mayor's Council where we discussed the plan. And Friday, July 6, was the Metro Mayor's Council, and a topic of discussion was the issues that municipalities are facing regarding the legalization of cannabis, both in its growing in agricultural land reserve, the production of it, and also in the sales of it, which we'll be dealing with, councils will be dealing with throughout British Columbia in our communities. So a good discussion on that. And there's, I know, some initiatives that are going through the UBCM for consideration to ask the provincial government to provide some assistance to municipalities in how they can regulate this industry. I wouldn't say it's a new industry. It's an old industry, it's just newly legal, put it that way. So with that, a few members of council, Counsel Qualley, who should speak?
Can I make a comment of your report?
Sure. Do you want me to comment on the report?
I just had something to add.
Okay, so I'll go to Counsel Fox and then Counsel Qualley.
I just want to make a comment, actually, two comments. Number one, if you go back some slides on your report, go back, I can go forward, I guess.
We get to see it all over again.
Keep going, keep going. The one with the bus.
Oh, that's the end.
Anyway, I just wanted to make a point, and you failed to mention, but I think it's critically important, that the vote was taken about the 1.5% gas tax. And I know, Mayor Fros, you voted against it, along with four of your colleagues, all from the eastern Metro Vancouver areas primarily. And I want to say that absolutely 100% behind you on that. This is, 1.5% gas tax is not appropriate, given our community, given the limited amount that we do get. Yes, we're part of a 10-year vision, but it certainly is to saddle the people of our area with that is just totally inappropriate, and I appreciate your vote on that. The second thing is, I know you spoke out, you didn't do much justice with your comments, but on the Mayor's Friday, at the Mayor's Council, you spoke out about the issues of cannabis growing in agricultural land, especially in greenhouse conversions and so on. So I thank you for that as well, because that, again, is the voice of this council, I think, moving forward. And we will hopefully catch the ear of the Minister of Agriculture and the moratorium that we've recommended and hope they can put them in place sooner rather than later. So thank you.
Thank you. Just some comments. Thank you for that. It's a cent and a half per liter, not one and a half percent, but 1.5 cents per liter addition. And the Mayor's Council received that letter from the minister the night before the meeting that the province had a shortfall, they told us in the 11th hour, of $300 million, $30 million a year towards the plan on a $7.3 billion plan. I felt it would be important that we got some options other than just accepting the 1.5 cents, that we should see some options on the plan, if there's something that we could move to Phase 3. And I'd ask for a motion, and that was defeated. So when it came to the plan, I just felt this is just too much. Gas tax is something we should be reducing, not increasing. And I felt that I couldn't support it. However, the Mayor's Council voted in favor, and I support the council that I'm part of. However, the gas tax that the province gave the mayor to the authority to increase the gas tax cap from 17 cents to 18 and a half, it hasn't been done yet, and I'm certainly going to be working to find other ways that that gap is covered rather than gas tax. I think it's a regressive tax. It doesn't work, and other ways should be found. And with the cannabis, you're right. It's something that a lot of municipalities are concerned about. And, you know, we have the ruling from Agricultural Land Commission that it's an agriculture product. We need to work with the province to get some regulation authority and before more are brought on, get some clarity on how we're going to be dealing with these. So Counsel Qualley, I'll put you on.
Thank you. When you were showing the pictures of the Aldergrove Credit Union Community Center, it reminded me that just over the last few days, Jack Nicholson, the CEO of the Otter Co-op, has recently been selected by Business in Vancouver and recognized as the 2018 B.C. CEO of the Year. He's the first CEO from Langley ever to be recognized in this way. And I think, you know, when you look at things like the Aldergrove Credit Union Community Center and the Otter Co-op Outdoor Experience, you know, it really highlights what a great corporate citizen Otter is. And under Jack's leadership, they really do give a lot back to the community. So perhaps the mayor's office could just make a note to send a congratulatory letter to Jack at Otter, because it's really a great recognition for him, but also for all the work... a great recognition for him, but also for all the work they do here in the township. So.
Thank you. It's already underway. Thank you. Counsel Long.
Yeah, if you're done with the report, I just got a couple of things to mention about Metro Parks. So as your representative of Metro Parks and the vice chair, actually, I just want to bring to council attention some information that's been released, and I'll put them in the council library. This talks about the branding of Metro Parks and how proud they are in the work they're doing, and talking a little bit about some of the goals and values that we have within Metro Parks. And we're very fortunate, you know, there are 26 parks in Metro Vancouver, and they are all, all the maintenance and the support and the financial obligations to those 26 parks are shared amongst the whole region, so we only pay our portion. But we happen to have six of them written in Langley, so we're very fortunate and benefit a lot from that. There were 11.9 million visitors last year. So this this talks about the visitor services and breaks down, you know, who visited what and how it all happened. And this talks a bit more about the branding of parks. I'll put those both in the council library. And this is the work on my, on the Zero Waste Council, also the Metro Zero Waste Committee that I'm involved with. And this talks about guidelines in ways that we can help reduce the amount of food that's wasted in Canada. About 30% of everything that a Canadian buys gets thrown away. So not only is it an issue dealing with how you dispose of that waste in a way that doesn't create greenhouse gases, greenhouse gases, but it's also such a shame when there's many people wanting for food and then we're throwing it away. So this talks a bit more in detail about that, and I'll let you in on the fact that we're going to be launching next Wednesday, July 18, a national food waste reduction strategy in terms of Love Food and Hate Waste. It's a campaign that we picked up from Europe, and it's going to be launched nationally, so keep an eye out for it, encouraging many different ways that you can stop food waste right at home. So that'll be released, I believe, 9:30 our time on Wednesday, July 18. There'll be a big media release about that. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. And Metro Vancouver Parks, I believe, is approximately three square miles of Metro Vancouver Parks within the township of Langley. So we're well-served in Metro Vancouver.
Six out of 26 are here, yeah.
Yeah, so that's great. All right. So now we'll move on to other businesses. Is there any other business? Counselor Richter, oops, bounced right through. Counselor Richter, you're my.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things here. Number one, I'd like to refer the Mr. Basani's delegation to staff for a report. Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah, if you move that. Second by Counsel Long, so I'm just gonna carry this way. Discussion on that. See now, I'll call, oops, Counselor Davis, you want to push the title?
Sorry. No discussion. I just was another business in my thing.
No, this is on the motion, so. Okay. So I'll call a question on the motion. That Carries unanimously.
Okay. And the second thing I'd like to bring up is the notice of motion I put on at this afternoon's meeting with regards to fixing up what I think is a small glitch in our election signage bylaw in time for the next municipal election. Given that we pretty much need to have the bylaw attended to at the next meeting and possibly a special meeting after that, but we need to attend to it before September the 4, I was wondering, because of the time considerations, if we could consider that notice of motion at this meeting.
So I think we certainly can. If you would like to make it a motion and put some specifics in the motion to give some direction to staff, that would be helpful. So there there is a bylaw, the bylaw that was replaced or by the new bylaw had a timeframe of 20 days prior to the elections. Is that correct? Yeah.
The predecessor bylaw had a restriction that election advertising could not occur more than 20 days prior to the start, prior to the election day.
So if Counselor Richter would like to use the same wording?
Well, actually, yeah, no, that was, I think the details were in the notice of motion that I read out. Do we have the rough copy? I can read it again.
I don't have the rough copy.
Oh, you don't have the rough copy. Okay. Well, maybe you guys can read it out.
Want to make sure we get clear direction in the council's.
The motion reads, whereas apparently elegant election signs for the 2018 municipal election can be erected starting September 4, 2018, whereas the nomination period for the 2018 municipal election does not close until 4:00 p.m. on Friday, September 14, 2018, whereas council has made changes to the election sign placement bylaw as a result of the 2014 municipal election, whereas candidates declaring early for the 2018 election would have a definite advantage in sign placement over those candidates declaring later in the nomination period, and this is not fair. Whereas seven weeks, September 14, 2018 to October 20, 2018, of election signs is a much longer period of time for the community to experience election signs compared to the past municipal elections. Therefore, be it resolved that staff bring forward the necessary bylaw changes to restrict the erection of election signs until after the nomination period has closed on September or September 15, 2018, in the case of the 2018 municipal election.
So that's what you wish to have in your bylaw?
Yeah, I wish so moved.
Okay. Is there a second or Counselor Long, second? And discussion?
Yeah, your worship, there's, I'm sure there was never an intention to increase from 20 days, which has been the practice for the last 30 or 40 years, or I don't even know how long, but certainly as long as I can remember, there's been a 20-day period by which the signs are put up. I don't think there was any intention to move that from 20 days, which is less than three weeks, to seven weeks. So there must have been something missed there. So I guess what we're asking here is that that clause be reinserted, the 20-day clause, which is.
This motion doesn't say that. This motion says September, that it says the day after the close of nominations, which this year would be September 15.
Okay, well, that's still going to require or allow six to seven weeks or six weeks.
So if you wish to make an amendment, you can make an amendment.
Well, I don't believe it was the intention, that that clause be removed. And so I would like to make an amendment that that clause is be reinserted into the bylaw, that in the case of a local government election in the township of Langley, that the rules be the same as they have been the last 40 years, which is 20 days prior to voting day. And I believe it's four days following. You have four days to get signs down. So that's the wording that was in the original bylaw that I looked up here.
And there's one thing that wasn't in the original bylaw, but was in the new bylaw, was that the sign erection would be at 9:00 a.m. We can make it 8:00 a.m., but instead of everybody running around at midnight, like a bunch of.
Starting 9:00 a.m., 20 days prior. Yeah, sure.
Yeah. If that's the amendment you wish to make.
I'd like to get up early myself, but that's the amendment, yeah. And the wording is actually in the in the previous bylaw.
Okay, Counsel Whitmarsh seconds that amendment to the motion. Discussion on that amendment. Counselor Davis.
Okay. I pressed my button pretty soon, but the problem, maybe it to, is that amendment? Okay. I guess maybe I need to talk to the mover, because I'm worried that it's just for the 2018 election. It may be we want it, like, that's the way it should be.
Would be in the bylaw.
It would be back in the bylaw.
It'd be part of the bylaw. So unless council, if future council changed amended the bylaw, then it would carry on.
It would carry on.
So it's part of the bylaw.
So it doesn't just stop at the 2018. Okay.
It's a bylaw reading. Yeah. Okay, thanks. Counsel Richter?
Yeah. I'm not going to support this amendment, because I actually think three weeks is too short. And whereas having signs go up on September 4 gives advantage to some candidates, because they can get their signs out quicker, they're going to put their papers in sooner. I think restricting it to three weeks gives advantage to candidates who already have name recognition, i.e. the incumbents. So what the existing bylaw has in place right now is seven weeks. I think seven weeks is way too long. I think people are going to get fed up with signs, and there's also going to be a lot of vandalism of signs. But I think cutting it back by that extra 10 days will take it down to four to five weeks. I think that's a much more reasonable period of time. And I also think it's a fair period of time for new people in the community that want to run, that maybe don't have name recognition, to have the opportunity to to get their names out. So the way the motion is worded that I put on, it says that you can put your signs up as of September 15 for this election. So September 15 through to October 20, the day of the election, is a five-week period. It's not a three-week period.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh on the.
Yeah, I think the, you know, three weeks is, is, I think, plenty of time. I'm less concerned necessarily about fairness to candidates as I am about fairness to the citizens of our community that have to put up with our signs and are seeing our faces for a long period of time. I think if we could reduce it to three weeks, I think most citizens would be quite happy to have a three-week period of time of signs everywhere they go and everywhere they drive. I think that's plenty of time for to promote. You know, last election, just by example, three incumbents were defeated, and there was a three-week period. So I don't think there's any weight to the fact that that might change people's minds. I'm not sure how many people are really focused on the election, much more than three weeks ahead anyways. So I would support this motion. I think 20 days is plenty of time for this community be covered in election signs. And so I would support the motion.
Thank you. Counsel Qualley?
Yeah, I was just going to say about the same thing. You know, I think 20 days is enough for the municipality to look like a sign junkyard. It's terrible to go on much longer than that. So I'll support the amendment to 20 days for sure.
Thank you. Counsel Sparrow?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think I'll support status quo. I don't remember hearing anyone say, geez, I wish we could have had the signs up for a little bit longer. So I think we'll just keep it as it is. I think it was, as Counsel Long said, a bit of an oversight in the sort of cleaning up of the language of the bylaw. So I think we just putting it back to how it was is appropriate and extending it longer is, I don't think, necessary.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll call the question on the on the amendment. Yep. So this will be M2, is that correct? M2, yeah. And it carries, Counsel Richter opposed. So back to the main motion as amended. I have a long speakers list. Counsel Whitmarsh, do you still wish to speak?
No, good.
Counsel, no, Counsel Richter still wish to speak?
Yeah, so I just want to make sure where the wording changed, because the original motion said that signs could go up September 15. I guess that's being struck now with the amendment, and what will go is signs can go up 20 days before the election day.
At 9:00 a.m.
That's correct, your worship. I think it's going to be on 9, at 9:00 a.m., the 20th day prior to the election.
Okay. Any further discussion? Call the question. Carries unanimously. Is there any other business?
Sorry.
Counselor Fox moves termination. Oh, sorry, Counsel Davis, did you have other business? Yeah, Counsel Davis.
Devin, a notice motion for the July 23 meeting. We were just talking about how Metro has as proud of their parks, so this fits in. Whereas the township of Langley is the fastest-growing municipality, as projected, Langley's population could potentially double within the next 30 years. This rapid growth can create challenges when developing new neighborhoods and finding a balance with nature. Whereas the township of Langley promotes being a healthy, active community and prides itself on parks, trails and green spaces. Whereas research has shown that walking in forested areas decreases stress and anxiety and inspires better moods when compared to walking in busy urban areas. Whereas Mayor and Council just passed the new Williams neighborhood plan and is now, it is now the time to put more green space, and therefore be resolved that council direct staff to look at putting in another five-acre park, complementing the natural beauty of nature and using the existing established trees and landscape. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other business? Okay, Counsel Fox, move termination. Second is Counsel Davis. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you. We'll spend a couple of minutes just switching over to the public hearing, and we'll start that up in just a few minutes.